At 7:00 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Klee will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Madam Chairman, would you like me to repeat that?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, you're muted.
Laura, you're on mute.
I was half done, too.
Tried to spare you. Okay, as President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 882-2713-3992. The passcode is 237958. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed in the National Telegraph, City Hall, and the Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-212049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Would the clerk please call roll? Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Klee.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings now, and I want to apologize. All of a sudden, I got this high pitched sound and everything went blank, so I truly apologize. But I am here. I am alone, and I can hear the proceedings. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm here. I can hear everyone, and I'm here alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I am alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Tenza was unable to join us this evening. Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here alone and can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Laws.
You're alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Cleaver.
President, I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
I'm present. I'm alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here and alone, and I can hear everyone.
You have 12 in attendance. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Tonight, we have a public hearing on Ordinance 21-045, amending the building construction ordinances and increasing the building department fees. Director Marchand, are you going to give us an overview of this ordinance, the changes?
Good evening. Yes, thank you so much. And Bill McKinney should be joining us any second as well, who is the Building Safety Officer. The proposal in front of you tonight is largely to update the ordinances that haven't been updated since 2002, and then also to increase the fees as a follow-up to our discussions in 2018 when we increased the fees and said we would do that in a two-part system so that we could become more in line with fees that all the other communities were charging as we found we were originally way undervalued. And, but to do so in a way that was economical and not putting too big of a burden on price changes at once. So with that intro, I'd like to turn it over to Bill McKinney, who is the Building Safety Officer.
Mr. McKinney.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Director Marchand, and thank you to the committee for allowing me to be in front of you this evening. As Director Marchand said, we spent the past two years reviewing the revised ordinances for the building codes for the City of Nashville. The NRO for that is a fairly lengthy one, involves several sections. One of the key issues that we hope to resolve with revising the ordinance and language in it was that currently, since our ordinance was updated, the state of New Hampshire has gone forward and has a statewide building code that includes all of these codes that we were adopting individually each code cycle. So one of the major changes is that we've made the language now so that we'll follow right along with the state of New Hampshire as they update. We'll update as well and won't have to go through a lengthy and time-consuming ordinance change every time the state does so. With that, we also have the fee changes that we've recommended. If you, some of you may recall, we began this in 2017 after some study that showed that our fees were by far some of the lowest in the state to comparable communities to us and communities around us. In 2017, we proposed an increase that went into effect in 2018. There was some sizable jumps on the commercial side of it, but we kept those fees quite low increases on residential in 2018 because the market was just starting to return and we didn't want to impact them negatively. So as I stated, in 2017, we began this process of a biennial review of our ordinances and fees. 2018, the fees that we currently have were approved. In 2019, our review process began again. We had anticipated these fees being before you in 2020. However, through the thorough review of Ordinance 105 and the updated language, it took much longer than we anticipated. We've all, we've all, we've altered several fees and calculated them to align with our new software, which has been quite tricky. Our hope with this, by bringing in and having these more rounded fees, we'll be able to more quickly bring on our customer portal, which is an online process for citizens and contractors to apply for permits online, submit all of their paperwork online, and pay all of their fees online, therefore reducing a lot of staff time and a lot of wasted paper. However, as we all know, in 2020, COVID complicated things quite a bit for us. Our offices were not quite set up to be operating remotely. We have since changed that. But we spent a good deal of time in order to do that. So that took some time from us to get these fees to our legal department for review and for legal to get them to you. So I know there's some questions on how our process goes with developing these fees. I put a directive out to our staff to look at the fees and use an average of between 15 and 20%. Again, though, you'll see this year that residential seems to be a larger increase than past, but that's, that's, that was calculated that way. Because as I stated before, in 2018, we kept residential lower rather than to impact that industry at a time when it was trying to recover. We feel that residential has recovered in a good way. It's very busy right now in the city. As you know, it's very difficult to buy a home and homes that are being built are not remaining on the market for very long. So now is the time to actually address those fees as well. Some of the difficulty that we found this year is, as we are reviewing fees, other communities are also reviewing fees and updating and trying to get some formulas in there so that we can, we can match was very difficult. And also, the way fees are calculated around the state, there is no standardization. In Nashville, we use square footage calculations, length calculations on pipes for plumbing, number of receptacles and devices under electrical, where other communities will use standard set fees. Some communities include all electrical and all plumbing in, under one fee. And so it is a very complicated process trying to come up with some very good comparisons. From what we can determine, though, we still remain lower than, as we have in pass, lower than Concord and Manchester, about in the same area as Laconia or Keene. And actually, I think we are higher, higher than Laconia, but about the same with Keene. So comparable communities were doing well. We still are about, about middle of the road, I would say, on our fee increases with what you had before you. So, and with that, I will entertain any questions.
Well, we are going to open this up to the public, and then we will have a discuss personnel meeting. So what I'd like to do now is I would like to open up the public hearing testimony in favor of Ordinance 2145. Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to Ordinance 20-045? Again, I'll call for testimony in favor and testimony in opposition. Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:13 PM. And I would look for a motion from Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the March 1st, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderwoman Curry.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Catherine.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13 yeas and zero nays.
And we are adjourned at 7:14 PM. Those of you on Personnel and Administrative Affairs, please stay on this call.
Yes, please. And would Mr. McKinley stay on in case committee members or anyone else can ask questions? Thank you.
Alderman Karen, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to call the meeting of the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee on Monday, March 1st, 2020 at 7:15 PM via teleconference. As Chairman of the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom, and the meeting link can be found on the agenda as well on the city's website. You can also join by telephone by dialing 1-929-205-6099. Meeting ID 882-2713-3992 and passcode 237958. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast, Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Alderman Kelly, would you please call the roll?
Uh, thank you. Okay. Alderman at large, Ben Simmons.
Thank you. I am here. I can hear everybody, and I am by myself in the room.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Kelly is here. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here, and my daughter is with me, and I can hear the proceedings.
And Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Great. Everyone is in attendance except for Alderman Lopez.
Okay, can you tell us who else is in attendance, Alderman Klee?
Well, there's lots of people here. We have Alderman Wiltshire. We have Alderman O'Brien. We have Corporation Council Bolton, Alderman Harry Gathright, Alderman Lou, Alderman Jettie, Alderman Laws, Alderman Klee. Our mayor is here as well. Alderman Schmidt. Director Marchand, did I miss anybody?
Alderman Dow.
Oh, sorry. You must have been on page two, Alderman Dow.
Mr. Crook. Mr. Crook.
Thank, thank you, thank you. We will start with public comments. Is there anyone out there that has anything to say concerning any of the agenda items this evening? Alderman Kelly?
I don't see anybody. Alderman Karen.
Okay. Thank you. All right, communications.
There are none.
Okay. Mayor, are you here with your Jedediah Crook for interview for an appointment?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Well, I am nominating Jed Crook as an alternate to the Conservation Commission. You, Madam Chair, may know Jed and/or his family. He's a native of Crown Hill. His father worked for the city for a long time. I'm sure you knew him, Madam Chair.
Jason Cook, yes.
Crook lived, worked for the city for a long time. But Jed went to Keene State College. He currently works at the Nashville Children's Home, where he's the assistant supervisor of the boys' unit and a resource educator. Previously, he's worked at Keene State College. He worked at Bridges. And he's, he's an active musician. He's a sound technician, and he's done various stints at Riverwalk Cafe, both, I think, musically and working behind the counter. So Jed, as a lifelong Crown Hill resident, as someone who is interested in Nashville and in the, in preserving our open space and our environment, I think he's going to make a great addition to the Conservation Commission. He's gotten to know the Chair, Sherri Dutzy, quite well, and so I think he's very familiar with what the responsibilities are. So I will just turn it over to Jed to tell us briefly why he would, why he's interested in serving on the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Crook.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the introduction. Yes, as the mayor said, I'm a Crown Hill resident for, since I was born, and I've spent a lot of time watching Nashville change over, over my life up until now. And it's in a really exciting and also tumultuous place, I think, in terms of where it is moving in terms of development and resources and land and open space being part of that. And so I'm excited to serve on the commission and the possibilities that that brings, and then also the possibilities for education, which is where I'm really excited about the opportunity there. My degree at Keene State focused a lot on environmental science education and specifically the historical implications of how we educate and different aspects of decolonization within that environmental science in K-320 curriculums. So yeah, I'm excited to hopefully be an aide and an asset and of service to the commission.
Great, thank you. So anyone from the Personnel Committee have any questions for Jed? Alderwoman Kelly?
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I don't have any que, thank you. I don't have any questions, but I do want to just thank you for coming forward and for volunteering your time. I know that, you know, it takes, as Hillary Clinton said, it takes a village and certainly, you know, when we have folks like you come forward, I think it really, it makes our community better. So, so thank you for your time and your efforts and everything. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. Anyone other Aldermen out there that would like to ask any questions?
Alderman Wiltshire. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Crook. How are you? Good. I was just, I couldn't let this go by without asking some kind of question. Have you been to the Conservation Commission meetings? And understand pretty much what they're doing?
Yes, I've been to the last two, and one of the things that's, I'm personally really excited about is that there's a lot, or a main point moving forward is the Salmon Brook area and Ward 7, which I've spent a lot of time personally in, trying to pull out invasives and clean up trash off of. And so I'm excited to do that through, not just as a normal community person, but also through the commission and hopefully that area specifically, I think, is a really incredible opportunity because it's, it's a really special nook of untouched area that's in a part of the town, part of the town that isn't really, I think, seen so often as a place for open space or open wildlife. But, you know, there's, there's major fish populations down there. There's, there's heron, there's deer, there's fox, there's coyote, all within this, this little nest of area that is really hidden sort of there behind the girls' ink that I think would be really great to, for that community especially that lives right around it to have access to. So I'm excited to see, to see that happen.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Well, Mr. Crook, I think your enthusiasm for getting on this committee is going to be a big asset, and I think it's great. As Alderman Clemmons said, we need volunteers and we need them to move the city along and make it grow and make it better. So thank you so much, and we will bring up your appointment later on in the meeting, and then you will be given the information as to when you can be sworn in. And again, Mayor, thank you for bringing someone so enthusiastic to sit on a committee for you again.
Well, he's great, isn't he? So I can't wait to see Jed on the Conservation Commission and maybe performing musically somewhere in the city as soon as we open up.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you. Okay, application to license hawkers, cuddlers, vendors license?
There are none.
Okay, appointments by the mayor. Alderwoman Kelly, would you make a motion?
I sure will. I move to recommend the following confirmation reappointment to the Citizens Advisory Commission, Jennifer Bishop Saffier with a term to expire October 1st, 2023. The following appointments to the Conservation Commission from alternate to member Carol Sarnell, and new alternate appointment of Jedediah Crook, both by term, both with terms to expire December 31st, 2023 by roll call.
Okay, will you, clerk, please call the roll?
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. I keep calling and he's not here. Alderman Kelly is a yes. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, thank you.
You have four yeas.
Okay, motion is carried. Thank you. Unfinished business.
There's none.
New business resolution.
There are none.
Okay, new business ordinance.
We have before us 021-045, amending the building construction ordinances and increasing the building department fees. And I will move to recommend final passage.
Okay, you heard the, I'm sorry.
I said by roll call, sorry.
Okay, thank you. You heard the motion. Does any of the committee members have any questions for either Mr. McKinley or Ms. Marchant?
I actually do. Making sure there's nobody else.
Okay, Alderwoman Helen, okay.
Um, so, Mr. McKinney, I believe you mentioned that, you know, there was a lot of updating to be done and keep us in line with what the state is doing. And now we've sort of shifted it so that won't happen in the past. Can you just explain that a little bit more? Like, there's become a bigger group of NROs? I didn't understand that at all. I was trying to follow.
As the, NRO 105 actually has several sections to it. Yes, the NRO 105 actually has several sections to it that involves the building, the commercial building code, the residential building code, plumbing code, electrical code, and it continues on. In 2015, well, actually, in 2002, the state adopted a statewide building code. In 2006, they included the residential code into that state building code. The City of Nashua did not revise our ordinances to keep at pace with that and instead still declared each individual code to be adopted within the city. So the language that we proposed to change is that the City of Nashville recognizes any amendments to the state building code, any updates to the state building code and amendments by the state and/or by the city to keep in pace with the state of New Hampshire. So currently, the state of New Hampshire is under the 2015 building codes, building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. However, our city ordinances were still referencing the 2002 codes, or the 2003 codes, my mistake. So that was causing quite a bit of confusion, even though there was language in there that said, or whatever code is most current. It was causing a lot of confusion for us, and it needed to be updated. So we've recommended language that will keep us on pace with the state each time the state updates the code, which is about every three years, a new code cycle.
Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to make sure I understood, and I appreciate your hard work. I don't want you to have to do any more than necessary. So it sounds like you did the right steps to get us in line here. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
I see Alderman Lou's hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Karen. I just had a couple of questions. And so I understand that we raised the residential rates in the first round. And my only question is, because I had noticed that the residential rate, I'm sorry, let me correct myself. In the first round, we did not raise the residential rates as much as the other two or three categories. And I noticed that in this proposal, the rates go up significantly for residential, but not for industrial or office. And it sounds like you're telling us, Mr. McKinney, that together, though, with the two changes, they've both been treated somewhat equally, and they're both sitting in the same position relative to other neighboring communities. Is that correct?
2017 for the adoption of the 2018 fee revisions. We elected, again, we used a 15% to 20% range on increases. We elected to keep the residential at the time on the lower end of that range because of the recovery that was going on in residential construction. Our fear was to raise our rates at that time would cause quite a bit of public outcry. So at this point here, residential, and we did state during those meetings and hearings that we would revisit that and probably have a slightly steeper increase in two years to address that, depending upon how the economy was going. And we feel that the economy, especially under residential construction, is the right time to bring that out, to bring all of the fees back into more of a level area. Again, we are probably about mid-range when you look at the other communities around us. You know, Manchester and Concord still tend to be higher than us on fees. And I don't believe we should be the top in the state, but I certainly don't want to put us where we were before as one of the very lowest.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had is, it may just be a typo, but looking at the mechanical rates on multifamily, they're either going down, or it's just a typo and the two rates were switched. Um, so I-
I suspect there's a typo there. I will have to look into that, and I can certainly respond to that question.
But none of them are going down. Is that correct?
No, the fees would not be going down.
Okay. The only reason I noticed it is I thought every one of these categories was going to reflect the same percentage change, and then I discovered it wasn't. And then, so I kind of, I thought that was a problem. I realize now it probably isn't a problem, that they, that they're scenarios and not straight figures.
Correct. We take into account of the amount of staff time when we look at the data entry that works for the projects. We also, as I stated before, is we're hoping to bring on our online portal. So some of these fees that we would normally charge, it may be, say it was $29.75 for a device that was rounded up to, you know, $30. And so we did that because we want to see how this online portal is going to work before we start having the variations in fees and, you know, pennies added to the fees. So a lot of our fees have been rounded up. We also did a change. Right now, the city charges what they call a base permit fee of, I think it's $68. But that doesn't calculate if we go into our online portal. There's no way to calculate that automatically in. So what we needed to do is we actually increased what your plan review fee and administrative fee would be, so that that would level out as soon as you did a permit. And it wouldn't, the system would automatically calculate.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm all set.
Okay, is there anyone else that has a question concerning 0-21-045?
Director Mashant, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you so much. Just really quick, the memo that Alderman Lou was referring to, I did send prior to this meeting, and I want to make sure that it gets included in these minutes. I can share it on my screen now, and I know Donna said she'd make it available with the minutes, but I just wanted to make sure for the record that that was, that this memo will be included in the packet, and that's the information Alderman Lou was referring.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, will the court please call the roll?
Alderman Schmidt, did you want to?
If you don't mind, I just wanted to say one thing. Cleaning up the code is okay for the city. Actually, it's really good for the city, but it's also very good for business and for homeowners as well. Is that right?
Yes, yes. It's important that we have, you know, clear and concise codes. And where our ordinances conflicted with the state code, that makes the process very complicated. Not just for our contractors, but when you think a lot of the licensed professionals, the designers and architects and engineers are working from out of state, they're looking at the state code, and then our code references something different. And it was really causing a lot of confusion.
Super, thank you. And bringing this all online will help that same situation a great deal.
Absolutely. Our staff currently is overwhelmed. Our front office staff is overwhelmed with emails and telephone calls and, you know, customers that, you know, even when we have walk-in customer, we return to that. That's a lot of time there. And the nice feature of the online portal is that contractors and developers can submit their information 24/7. Any time of the day or night, they can submit their information, get their information out there. We can respond to them, let them know that their permits are approved, they can pay online, and everything is moving much faster and, you know, much to their benefit and ours.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt. Okay, if there's no one else, the court can call the roll.
Alderman Karen?
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons?
Forgive me, but I thought I saw Alderman Dowd's hand.
I didn't. Did you need to speak, Alderman?
I was just going to say that I know that this past year during the pandemic, the building department has been extremely busy because there's been a lot of construction going on, not only commercial, but everybody being home has done a lot of work at their home. And I can say personally, from the school building that we're going through and a personal project of my own, which I'm sitting in, that the response from the department has been outstanding. And I just wanted to thank them for all of the work they do.
I thank you for that, Alderman Dowd, and I really appreciate those comments. And I agree, our staff has done just a phenomenal job of adapting to some drastic changes this year in the work world for us. And, you know, our staff are still out there every day, doing what they need to do. They've embraced the remote and virtual inspection process and have really made that whole new ability to us really roll very well. And contractors are buying into that very well. So I thank you for your very generous words.
Shall I go back to the roll?
Yes, please.
I believe, Alderman Karen, you said yes. Alderman Clemmons? I don't remember getting a response for me.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly is a yes. Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
You have four ayes.
Okay, motion passed for ordinance 0-21-045. And good luck, Mr. McKinney, to set that all up on the computer. Great job. Okay.
Thank you again.
Next, you're welcome. Alderwoman Kelly?
We have before us 021-046, changing the start time of the regular meetings of Board of Aldermen. I'll move for final passage by roll call.
Okay. Alderman Juddi, are you there so that you can speak on this, please?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. So I think this is a fairly innocuous proposal. And it's simply, this proposed ordinance simply changes the starting time of our regular automatic meetings from 7:30 to 7 o'clock. You know, having sat through many meetings that have gone on till, you know, till, you know, late at night, you know, I thought that would be, you know, better if we could start earlier. So that's the main reason for this. All of our other, I think almost all of our other committee meetings and board meetings all start at 7 o'clock, like tonight's meeting starts at 7. So I thought it would be good to have some consistency in the start times of our meetings. And I looked around at, you know, and consistency would be good not only for us, so we always know what time our meeting is going to start, but also for the public. And I also looked around at, you know, at other cities and cities in the area or in the state. And they all start at 7 o'clock as well. Manchester starts their Board of Aldermen meetings at 7:30, but they have a 30-minute period of what they call public participation. It's like our public comment period that starts at 7 o'clock. So I thought it would be good for us to make this change. And, you know, I hope other people agree. Thank you.
Alderman Willshire?
Okay, do we have anyone from the committee that has any questions for Alderman Juddi?
I have comments, but I can hold until the conversation is done.
Okay, does any other Alderman that's out there have any questions or concerns?
I don't see hands from any of the committee members, but I do see Alderman Willshire's hand up.
Okay.
And Alderman Dowd, sorry. Your hand is blending into your ceiling, Alderman Dowd. It's part of the problem on my screen.
Back to the old program, Alderman Dowd.
Okay, Alderman Willshire, and then Alderman Dowd.
Thank you. I don't have a problem moving this to 7. Either way, 7, 7:30, it doesn't really matter to me. What we, when we did this, I'm going to say it was probably 15 or so years ago. We had, it was Alderman Toler at the time who was working down in Massachusetts, and Alderman McCarthy worked down in Massachusetts, and sometimes they had a hard time getting here for 7 o'clock. And so we changed it then. Like I say, I don't really have a feeling one way or the other. I'll just go with what the Board feels is right. So, but that's why we did it. That's why we made the full board meetings a little bit later, so that everybody could participate.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd?
First of all, I always support the thinking that if they ain't broke, don't fix it. But more importantly, our meetings butt-tail up against the zoning board. And the Aldermen have a very little chance to give an input, as it is, to the ZBA because they start their meetings at 6:30, and by the time they read the COVID thing and everything. And they have been nice enough to allow us time to speak in advance, but we're always butting up against even the starting at 7:30. We start at 7, Aldermen won't have any input to the zoning board, which impacts all of our wards. And I don't think that's right. So unless somebody's willing to change the day of the zoning board, I think we ought to keep the meeting at 7:30.
Alderman Cle also has her hand up.
Okay, Alderman Cle.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I echo the words of Alderman Dowd. I've had to speak in front of the zoning board, and it does, it does create an issue. As it is, if your case isn't being heard right away, you have to ask for special dispensation to be able to speak ahead of time and so on. And it does create quite an issue. There's been twice when I barely made it to a meeting, and I think we'd be handicapping ourselves. And I can say that when, as a state rep, my committee used to meet on Tuesdays, and we would have meetings on Tuesdays, and there were times I was rushing home from Concord to try to get to a meeting. So I would personally prefer us to stay at 7:30, and as was mentioned, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Anyone else? Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you. If we were to change this for our convenience, because no one on the board currently needs to come back from what's going on at your house, Shana. If no one needs to come back from Boston or rush down from Concord, it may change. You know, we've got our elections every two years. If several of our members can't make it back here at reasonable time to get to a 7 meeting, it would be a shame that we'd have to change it again. I think consistency really would be a goal in this, in keeping it at 7:30 now and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly, would you like to speak now?
Sure. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay.
Um, I actually have a lot of similar comments that have been said before, but I would say that I'm sure Alderman Clemmons joins me in knowing that getting down to Boston and back before 7 is always, is a feat sometimes, obviously not currently an issue, but I would be in favor of keeping it where it is for that reason and for some of the other reasons butting the planning board, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Alderman Cleaver. And then Alderman Juddi.
Madam Chair, I agree with Alderman Dowd. The zoning board is very important to all of us. And unless they're going to change their meeting, I don't see how we can change ours. And again, with- And uh a-again with the Alderman Cle sometimes the state meetings run up against our our meetings on Tuesdays and and uh for the same reason, I would very much like to keep it where it is.
Thank you. Alderman Juddi, I have a question for you. Before you put this piece of legislation in, did you have any conversation with uh members of the board to see how they felt about this?
I think I I spoke to um the uh the the president. And um I also spoke to Alderman Clemmons because I knew that I I I first thought of this uh last year, the year before. And at the time, Alderman Clemmons was uh was commuting you know, from Cambridge and um and I didn't want to, you know, do this if it would uh make it more difficult for him, but you know, at the time he told me he was moving to uh to uh I think um Bedford um and that it would be he didn't, he didn't anticipate it would be a uh a problem. And then, of course, now now with COVID, everyone's at home anyway. I um I think I mentioned it to Alderman Lopez and he he said he thought it sounded like a good idea. I didn't speak to many others because I didn't want to run afoul of the uh the right to know law and the uh talking to people um. I'm still, I'm still uh you know, wary of of violating that that provision. So you know, I didn't, I didn't poll all of the other members for that reason. You know, if I could uh you know, what, you know, I hear what the what what my fellow Aldermen are saying about leaving it the way it is and um you know, I appreciate their um their input. Um I would like to point out that um just about every meeting, every other meeting starts at seven. You know, or earlier. The uh the Board of Public Work starts at five thirty. And we've, we all seem to have managed to have uh arranged our schedules such that we can, we can attend whatever you know, meetings we're interested in. You know, the zoning board of adjustment, I've you know, I've I've appeared before the zoning board of adjustment and as has been pointed out, they've uh they've been a very accommodating and and allowed um me as an Alderman and I'm sure other Aldermen who have made known their desire to testify. They've, they've taken me right at six thirty in in order to make sure that I could make the um the Board of Aldermen uh meeting. Um so you know, I think you know, the the zoning board of adjustment meetings sometimes, you know, go to ten o'clock or later, so you know, even meeting at seven, starting our meeting at seven thirty, uh you know, there's still the possibility that um that uh you know, you would have a conflict uh you know, trying to attend the zoning board uh meeting as well. They do take um you know, testimony, uh they they do allow you to submit testimony, you know, written testimony, but uh but I understand what people are saying and um you know, I thought it was I I thought it was, you know, the I I didn't see any downside to moving it up to seven o'clock since all of our other meetings start at seven or earlier. Um but I bow to the the general wisdom of my fellow board members.
Thank you for your uh answers, Alderman Juddi, and and I appreciate that you didn't contact everyone because obviously uh the right to know can be very complicated. Okay. Is there anyone out out there that has questions or concerns?
Alderman Clemmons, is your hand up on purpose?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Clemmons.
Uh so to be honest, I I appreciate um you know, the conversation here. Um I work in Lexington, Mass now. It's where the office is, but I've been um to be, to be honest, I've been telecommuting since uh August, so. But I mean, that that is going to change and likely um you know, I'll be in the office at least on, I know for a fact I'll probably be in the office on Tuesdays, so. Even if my, the rest of my schedule, excuse me, the rest of my schedule doesn't change. So um you know, so I mean, some days it's fine. Some days, you know, getting back from from Lexington is, you know, not a problem. It's a breeze and I get home in an hour. Other times it's, you know, depends, it's an hour and a half, so. You know, and depending on what's going on in the workday, but to be honest, to me, um I don't, I don't care one way or the other. Um particularly because we, you know, if if there's something, I mean, I can get to the meeting late or if there's something um pressing, you know, I can we can participate via teleconference or phone. But I mean, I also understand what the rest of my colleagues are saying about the zoning board, and I think that's a bigger issue um than than my own myself. So um I'm I'm going to defer to to my colleagues on this one.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk. Yeah.
Just one, just one additional thing. Um
Alderman Dowd, you can
Yeah, uh many times when we go to the ZBA, you can, you can get, you can squish in your comments before, but uh I've had issues with the school building project where I had to stay there for a good part of the meeting to listen to the dialogue and answer questions and and resolve things that uh uh to ensure the timely construction of the of the schools. The other thing is you can't go into the meeting late and comment because they vote on things and once they vote on things, that's it. They're not gonna go back and reconsider after they take their vote. So going in at the end of their meetings doesn't work. Once the case is heard, the case is heard. So um you know, and and other nights where the committee meeting started seven, we're not butting up. We're butting up against the uh if, for instance, the planning board. You're butting up against a committee meeting. It may not even be the committee that you belong to. But in the case of the zoning board, you're butting up against the full Board of Aldermen meeting. And in in retrospect, and and to uh fulfill our requirements to our constituents, we should be at all aboard of Aldermen meetings. So that's why I would not be in favor of changing the time.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Dowd. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay. Alderman Karen?
No.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderman Kelly is a no. Alderman Cleaver?
No.
You have four nays.
Okay, so motion failed for zero dash twenty-one dash zero four six.
I believe I need to make a motion for indefinite postponement of oh two one oh four six.
Yeah.
Discussion on that motion? All right.
None?
Karen?
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, Alderman Juddi put his hand up right as. Go ahead, Alderman Juddi.
Yeah, so I, you know, I I accept the committee's uh decision about uh you know, not moving forward with this, but um you know, again, we, you know, we ran into this uh idea of of using indefinite postponement. I I know the intent, I think the intention is just to uh just to 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 uh put an end to this. But the the consequence of a motion for indefinite postponement is that a uh you know, the, you know, a similar ordinance could not be introduced uh for the rest of the term. So for example, if um you know, if if the zoning board uh changed their meeting night, which I think, you know, might, you know, is certainly something I would um you know, just discuss with them, you know, the idea that the zoning board would would pick a night that conflicts with the you know, our regular Board of Aldermen meeting. You know, it's it, you know, that doesn't seem, that seems wrong to me because you know, even though we, our meeting starts uh an hour later, so they start at six thirty, we start at seven thirty, as Alderman Dowd points out. Sometimes their agendas are very long and the thing that you that you um you know, want to um to be heard on and and uh and and you know, part of that is um, you know, Alderman Dowd brings out a good point. You want to be there to hear the discussion and you know, hear what other people have to say. You know, there's a time for not only testimony but rebuttal and so to fully participate in the meeting, you really, you know, should be there for the whole thing. And that means, you know, that you would miss you know, you'd be conflic- conflicted, you know, do you attend the zoning board meeting or do you attend the Board of Aldermen meeting? So so uh if if perchance they they would change their their meeting, then you know, maybe this would be worth taking another look at. So I think um you know, the, you know, we we don't have to end things by indefinite postponement. There there is another alternative and that is to reject it. You know, rejection defeats it, so it's done. It doesn't hang around. But uh it doesn't prevent the uh the reintroduction of the ordinance or anything or something similar to it that would be prevented with the uh motion for indefinite postponement. So I would suggest if all you want to do is is end this without without uh you know, and leave the door open for future consideration if circumstances change and warrant that. Then it would, it would, I would suggest you know, I think Alderman Clemmons is more of a parliamentarian than I am, but I would suggest that maybe just rejecting it would would accomplish your your purpose without um preventing it from coming up in the future if that was appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Alderwoman Kelly, would you withdraw your motion?
I don't care. Attorney Bolton, I thought we had gone over this multiple times and that the only way to dispose of legislation was either to indefinitely postpone table. We
The consequences of a motion to reject that passes and the consequences of a motion to indefinitely postpone, which passes are identical. Your rules say that once you've disposed of a piece of legislation, you can't introduce it again in the same term. Uh you can suspend your own rules. You can introduce things, you can, things could be done slightly differently. You could start, you could propose an ordinance to start the meeting at seven fifteen or seven ten or seven oh one. There are many ways to accomplish what the full board has determined it wants to accomplish. But the distinction, there is no distinction between rejecting legislation or indefinitely postponing legislation.
In that case, I would like to keep my motion as is and call the roll.
Okay, so the motion is to indefinitely postpone zero dash twenty-one dash zero four six. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clemmons has his hand up.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Um I I normally would go, would agree with i-if this was a, if this was a I actually agree with with what um Alderman Juddi said in the sense that if they, if if they were to change the um zoning board that um you know, if that's our, uh seems to be that's our issue. Although it was, the State House was mentioned as well, but um that if they were to change that, maybe we would want to revisit this. So I I would be more inclined uh to simply table this and leave it in the committee, but um that's uh, that's another option.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Kelly, do you see anyone else?
I do not.
Okay. All right. The motion is the same, to indefinitely postpone.
Correct.
Alderwoman Kelly, okay, Alderwoman Kelly, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderman Kelly is a yes. Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
You have three yeas and one nay.
Okay, so this ordinance is indefinitely postponed. We're not taking anything off the table, so do we have anyone for public comment?
I don't see any members of the public present.
Okay, uh any, any general discussion? From anyone?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, any remarks by the Aldermen?
Everyone's looking quiet.
Oh, okay. Uh possible non-public session? There is none. Alderwoman Kelly.
I move to adjourn by roll call.
Okay, the motion is to adjourn by roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly is a yes. Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
You have four yeas.
Okay, motion carried and our meeting has ended at eight oh eight PM. Thank you, everyone.
And everyone.